We want to welcome you all this evening and we thank you for coming. We need to reconvene, open session. So, I need a motion? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, show of hands to reconvene, open session, please. Very good. Okay, stand with me and help us say the pledge allegiance together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to welcome our two newest members this evening. We have two student members, Mr. Ben Font and Ms. Kylie Outlaw. We're glad that you're here. Next thing on our agenda for this evening is the special recognitions. And we have quite a few. The junior high has some things they'd like to share, so we'll have our junior high principal.
Junior High would like to recognize our fall sports teams for their academic achievement. The student athletes, 310-15 hours a week, their practices and games, and still managed to perform well in the classroom. Here's a list of our team GPAs, including student athletes who earned a 4.0 during their season. Start with working from the bottom up. Seventh grade football had a 3.0, Cody Bishop and Wyatt Husky having 4.0 GPAs. Volleyball teams, we had seventh grade volleyball had a 3.6, Cheyenne Anderson and Meyer Wright had 4.0s. Eighth grade volleyball had a 3.5 GPA with McKenzie Baker, Peyton Gronberg, and Sophia Machete. Boys cross-country, we had a 3.4 GPA, Alan Mora and Hayden Euler had 4.0s. And our girls cross-country teams had the highest GPA of the 3.6 with six individuals earning a 4.0 on Emily Posey, Maggie Kearney, Brown Langrier, Emma Wright, and Meyer Wright. And yes, Meyer Wright was on two teams with her 4.0. Thank you all the student athletes for representing our school well in and out of the classroom, along with their parents and coaches for the additional support during the season. Congratulations to Junior High's student council, who hosted their annual Christmas penny drive this year. Students and staff donated $2,592. This money was used by student council or by Christmas presents to give to 25 Hillsborough children. Special recognition goes to Mrs. Schmitz and the Spades classes, who donated over $20 per student. And our student council sponsors are Sherri Jackson and Helen Schitt.
Okay, next we'll hear from the high school.
Mr. Marino is going into the athletic.
Oh Shay.
All right, this will be high school football news. The Hillsborough High School football program had 128 student athlete participants in grades seven through 12 this fall. Overall, team GPA was a 3.1, which is our highest in some time. We had two all-state selections. Michael Cullor was a second-team running back, and Jacob McNeese was a first-team offensive lineman. Eight all-conference selections, six all-district selections, and four academic all-state selections. They're the top student of their class with a 3.5 GPA or above and started on offense or defense. Those were Tyler Iserson, Shane Hart, Justin Sanders, and Luke Skaggs. The varsity record ended with nine wins and three losses, team placing second in district and earning a MAFC Red Division championship title. Our JV was 8-0, they earned the conference championship. The freshman team was 5-3 and also conference champions. Coach Freeman and his staff are strictly proud of the young men and their successes on and off the field. And on a side note, I'd just like to share the accolades of Coach Freeman this fall, which he does a really good job providing not only the athletic, but the academic portion of everything. And this fall, he was named MAFC Red Division Coach of the Year, Southeast Missouri Region Coach of the Year, Jefferson County Leader Paper Coach of the Year, and J-98 KRII Dream Team Coach of the Year.
And Dr. Freeman, I believe you have...
Yes, I'd like to share that our FCCLA collected donations from RTI classes at the high school for the Hillsborough Food Pantry last month and ended up collecting nearly 1,000 items. Coach Freeman's RTI ended up collecting the most at nearly 600 food items, earning the milk and cookies during the December 15th RTI. FCCLA also recently used the proceeds from the very successful third annual father-daughter dance to purchase holiday gifts for 20 local children in need. FCCLA was also able to purchase necessities for the family of fallen firefighter and veteran Zach Crowley. FCCLA continues to raise money for the Crowley family through Thursday, December 22nd, with gift wrapping services at the high school in exchange for donations. And so far, they've raised $200. And from the Learning Center, in only two short weeks, our district came together to help the Hillsborough Food Pantry in an incredible way. After Learning Center students put out the word and placed huge boxes in each school building, students and staff donated over 600 toys to help our area's neediest families have a better Christmas. The pantry's workers said they had little hope of offering such treasures before the 30 Learning Center students paraded in with armfuls of toys. The pantry's two biggest donors have canceled on them this year and they didn't know what they'd tell their clients. The Hillsborough R3 family came through and made all the difference. And I want to also point out that my family participates in the Elks food basket delivery and processing last Saturday. And before that, 30 of the Learning Center kids went to the Elks and they all helped take all that food and all of those items off the trucks for the Elks members and got it all ready to go, along with DeSoto students as well. And then something else I didn't get to share with you, but I think it's worth noting, and I'm sure Mr. Marino will agree. But we have two students, Peyton Liston and Lexi Close, who took it upon themselves to raise money for our alumni student Haley King, who was in a recent car accident. They sat at the Dean's Cyclops Tournament every evening. They had gotten some donations, fitted a variety of raffles for different items, $250 gift card for Home Depot, that type of thing. They were able to present the family $700, so I want to thank them for that.
Well done. All right, and we have no visitors, correct? Okay. So, next item then is the consent agenda. There are several things there for your... for you to review. I will need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve consent.
As presented. Thank you. Need a second? Thank you. Okay, any discussion of any of these items? Okay. So, I guess we can show... have a show of hands for all those that approve the items on the agenda. Very good. Okay. Moving on to reports, we'll start with Dr. Cornman, Superintendent of the Court.
All right, I know every month I say I'm going to keep this short and it's about 15 pages, so a couple of things I do want to mention. Currently, if you look down at the updates, Communications Team, we had 13 individuals come together for that. We're planning our next meeting for the 18th. For those of you on the board that are serving on that committee, please mark that on your calendar. January the 18th will be our second meeting for the Communications Team. Currently, for the Board of Candidate Filings, we have three individuals that have signed up. Mr. Director Anji Oshie, Chad Nicholas, and Jane Heine. Are three individuals that have currently signed up to run for the Board. Stadium speakers, I just received an update this afternoon from Mr. Marino. Most, the majority of the equipment is in. They're awaiting two pieces that have not arrived yet. One piece is backordered. They're going to call to schedule a time, depends upon weather, when they're going to get that installed at the stadium. Did I leave anything out of that? All right. A couple of other things, you see there, the bus garage. After final review at the bus garage, the damage that was done from the break-in, it was less than $1,000, so we did not turn that into insurance. I do want to commend Ray Best, his team. You know, we work hard to get those alarms set. And because the alarm was set, they were able to catch the individual actually in the bus garage. He did claim to be a new employee, but he did not know Regina's name, so... Regina, okay, thanks. But I want to let you know that I did approve a purchase of $2,650. Isn't that correct, Ray? Is that the right amount? We're going to actually increase some of the sensors, the beam sensors at the bus garage, since it is off-campus. And I want to commend Jefferson County. I think response time was between six and eight minutes, and they were coming from stake and shake, and they did have to wait to pay their bill. So, we do appreciate the police responding very quickly to our district. We want to commend them for that. Now, a couple of things that are not on there that I do want to bring up first. The district is coming to an end to, with our student portrait package. For the past, I guess, three, six years maybe, Interstate Studios has been providing that service to the district. Mr. Groner has kind of been leading the charge of getting information from our administrators. To this point, his response to me, actually have her in front of me, was that our administrators are very happy with Interstate. And our contract expired at the conclusion of the 2012-13 school year, but it was decided at that time to extend with Interstate because the district was very satisfied with their products and services. I believe prior to them, you had struggled with a provider that, what would be a politically correct thing to say, Mr. Rittenhour, that was not providing...
Met the needs of the district.
That met, thank you, sir, that met the needs of the district at that time. So, I guess what I'm asking is, would the Board be okay with us bringing Interstate back to you? Or would you like for us to take that out for bid?
Are we currently doing a year-to-year with Interstate?
We actually do not have a contract. Then we just extended what we currently had, and that's coming to an end. So, if it ended in 1213, we extended another contract to them, so it was, I guess, a three-year contract at that time.
Do they need to focus for everything?
Yes.
On a regular basis? Two seasons?
You name it, they do it.
Our dances, everything.
Dances. They do everything for us. And I kind of have some of the remarks here from the administrators. Of course, they're here as well. Derek is with us in the back. We appreciate him and all the work they do for us. We're confident in that the product they're putting out there, we're pleased with. But again, if the Board is wanting us to go out to bid, we can do that as well.
And comparable prices?
Comparable prices, yes. And I will be honest with you, Superintendent, I've taken photography out to bid several times. And don't be people that come in and undercut them. There will be people that will do it for less. But we had that before, and the district was not satisfied with that.
They couldn't meet the demands?
No, if you're okay with that, we'll put an executive summary in front of you in January to let you know we would like to proceed. And we can get some price points together for you and submit it to you in January.
Sounds good.
One thing that they do that I really like, and some schools have started doing that, is providing senior portraits to students at a lessened rate, comparable to going and getting a professional photographer. So, some of our students are not having to pay a high price to still get, is it three or four sittings with some wardrobe changes.
They have wardrobe changes, they're allowed to bring their pets? I mean, it's really, they do a nice job.
And it's actually on the stage, so... But we'll get more information to you. I just kind of wanted to get that out in front of you. Next?
Whenever you do that, can you share with us what the difference is in price? What the increase is? I'm assuming that there's going to be an increase. Can you share with us what that percentage will look like?
They're talking about price point. If the price is going to be going up, or you project it to go up, what the difference will be?
There is no prediction that it will now, so you know.
Okay.
And I think our raising statement is consistent over the contract term.
Right, it stays consistent.
It's been that way for a while.
Yeah, we haven't raised it since, I think, 2012.
Right. So, we'll need to, we'll work with myself, Mr. Groner, to get that pricing back out. And if it stays the same since 2012, we need to report that to the Board. All right, thank you. A couple of other things, I would like, if it pleases the Board, to have our students' advisors maybe get a report together and report to you as a Board on some of the goings-on at the high school, some of the things that they would like to see changed. I do know that maybe the amount of food on the trays, they would love to increase. However, I don't believe that that is going to happen, Ben, I apologize. Because that's kind of set at the federal level. However, if they say, hey, we need more Crispitos, or we need to have more of this, or we'd like to see more of that, you know, we can send that to Ms. Jackson. Or if there are things in the building they would like to change. However, I am going to request that they meet with Dr. Freeman prior to the end of the year to do the board packing.
Well, they already have many ideas.
Oh, very good.
I was sharing with the student advisors as well, something we learned at a conference, was talking to other student advisors from other districts. They took them around to each of the Learning Centers, introduced them to the student bodies, and then left suggestion boxes. So, that'd be a great idea, so you can get input from the lower grades as well.
That's right.
What they'd like to see.
Very good. All right, and lastly, I told you to be short. We have had an increase in the amount of students going on long-term suspension for drugs and alcohol. And I think I've had five to six student discipline hearings since the beginning of school that are seen anywhere from 20 to 45 days out of school. We talked previously about a re-entry program. And I really want to thank Stephanie Dix and the high school administration. We were able to contact an individual, and Dr., let's see, Mrs. Hilda Brand was in on that conversation, Mrs. Dix, and they met with him. And we were very excited about that program. In January, I'm going to bring to you what that's going to look like. It is counseling, parent counseling programs. It is like intensive therapies. And they go beyond just the 45-day suspension. And what we would like to see is that student coming back in after maybe 10 days and going through these programs. And if at any point they don't complete it, then they would have to finish their 35-day suspension. But what we're seeing is, when a ninth-grade student is put out of school, it really hampers their educational career throughout the high school career. And it puts them behind. Even though they're working, we're providing those services, we have points of contact to keep their grades up, it's on them and their parents to work and to teach them, so they don't fall behind. So, we're going to get that to you. I know we've talked about it for a couple of years. Specific, last year it came up quite a bit. But this program, Mr. Brenning, anything you want to add to that?
It's federally funded through a grant. They have the grant for four years. Next school year will be the third of their four years. They also just received a Jefferson Foundation funding grant to which they have a mobile unit now, because their offices are in Washington, Missouri, and Diamond Olive in West County. But they have a mobile unit that will be right here.
And some of that would be, well, we have talked to the attorney, if we're going to do random drug testing of those students, what requirement is as far as completion of the program. They will have to go based upon the recommendations of the program. So, there's a lot to do, but I wanted to let you know that we're going to do something. This program, I believe, is free of charge to the district. But yet it provides so much. And they've been coming to your high school and speaking about sexting, bullying, smoking drugs.
Bullying, substance abuse, just positive correlations of the use of digital citizenship. But not just, this is how we should do it, this is how it impacts you, free of charge. And they're doing, they did a wonderful parent night for us during our teacher, parent-teacher conferences, to let, you know, just to educate parents on what to be looking for as your kids are on the internet, and how that issue kids are on different social media sites. It's a great organization.
They also offer several programs that start in kindergarten, and all of that is free of charge, so they will keep it only...
We do give the intermediate as well for our parents.
And it's the National Council for Awareness of Drug and Alcohol Abuse?
Alcohol and drug abuse.
Okay, what is that acronym?
N-C-A-D-A.
N-C-A-D-A, if you want to jot that down and check them out online. Scott, is that, was that the...
Yes, sir. The popcorn with the principal.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Extra for the ice cream. Correct.
Plenty of that outside. All right, again, I just want to call your attention to the calendar at the bottom of this page. You kind of see the goings-on between now and the next board meeting. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Director Best? I'm here for you.
Good evening. I'll try to make it short, too. I'm not too bad, just give you a briefing of what we've been working towards last month or so, and what we're still working on. We've been having consistent issues with the heating issue in one of our main hallways, hallway in the primary. We first thought we had the RTU under control by taking care of it. But we realize now we have a heater change that now went out. So, it has been ordered and will be hopefully in place by this coming Wednesday, so... So, hopefully, we'll get that fixed. Biggest problem we're having with the primary, which that's why we need some more financing, is our, these RTUs are getting very old in there. A lot of these RTUs have been sitting there since about '90, '93. So, most RTUs are good for about 15 years. And then you start reworking on them. And then, of course, trying to find the parts is the hardest part. So, as you can tell, they've got some age on them. But we are working on it, constantly trying to get them, keep the staff and the students comfortable while they're trying to learn. So, that's been a challenge, unfortunately, I apologize for you. But we are working on that. Sidewalk at the elementary has turned well. We did get it all completed, and we pressed it a couple of times on a couple of light ranges. It went well, so hopefully, the heavier range will do well soon. High school has been a little bit work on us. We've had some issues with the theater lighting, and somebody, Mike Miller, has had some students in the plays and so forth this past month. And we have got that resolved at this time, or on the fact of having the company come in and actually redo it. They'll be working on the mixers, the dimmer control systems, and actually putting in new systems on the walls, which actually will be the controller boxes and sliders.
I got to hit the pause button. I want to talk about that just from...
Sure.
That potential cost is going to be around, was it $10,000? How much was it, Ray?
$93, $94, $5.
Right around $10,000, which was not budgeted. But what we've done with the help of Mrs. Ginge, was look at what Ray had budgeted this year. You know, we're moving some of those expenditures to the end of the year, starting in July. That will allow us to use the money without having to cost the district extra money. Does that make sense? Like, for example, we want a new carpet in the theater. Well, if you don't have theater lights, the carpet's not going to help us. So, we're using some of that money. And just kind of here and there, moving money around. So, Ray, I wanted to follow up a little bit.
Thank you. And to follow up and continue on that note as well, we are basically making sure that this will be in place for many years to come. So, what will happen is, this system they're putting in can be added to if we need it to down the road. So, it won't cost the district any extra money that way. It'll be a good system, we're looking forward to it. We also fixed the LC boiler friendly. American boiler finally figured out what the damper control configuration problem was with that thing, because we kept losing heat in this building. So, as you know, the cold air and temperatures weren't friendly with us here a while back, that early cold. But the staff and the students and especially the administration's been a real trooper for us. So, we appreciate all of them, too, so it's been a challenge. Firewalker, who you approved to do all the checks on all, each, every individual's smoke detector and the pools and the strolls and all that, they will be back in tomorrow. They've got the intermediate Learning Center completely done, elementary's half-done. They will be back in tomorrow and will continue doing the process. So, between tomorrow and hopefully Monday, with no one being around, other than them and me, they're hoping to get completely done. So, hopefully, by end of January, when we have the next board meeting, they will give us a full report, and we'll see how it's going. So, and everything will be done. I want, I put in here, too, about the concerts. I wanted to thank Junior High. They helped us out a lot, a lot of the buildings with the concerts because they probably had in the theater with the lighting issue. They hosted us really well, and the students. And we wanted to thank them for doing an outstanding job taking care of that. I know it has to be a little challenging for them. And so, I wanted to tell them thank you. Working with Mr. Ramsey and Jaris, our SRR officer, we are looking at each building individually now at unlocking certain doors. As Mike knows, that we don't allow every door to be unlocked from the outside because there's no keypads. Now, we're looking at that a little differently because of getting Jaris or security or somebody into that building quicker. Some of that's from all the training we've been doing with the active shooter training, as well as just situations that occurred in some of these buildings. So, we're working with them to get some of these doors that are going to be rekeyed differently, so they can't get in a little quicker to help out. Okay? The other thing I put on there, 165 work orders last month. Got us a little busy, but we did those. We did get the salt, which came in handy this past week, as you all know. And then, of course, we broke the spreader, so that was great. But, I've got to say, we got it fixed, so it was good. It only cost me about $200, but that's good, because that spreader's worth a million when you've got to get salt moved, so it was great. And you already know about the issue with the transportation. And I think if you have any questions on that, please let me know. We'd be happy to explain that. I believe I've covered everything that I have for you, other than happy holidays. Any questions? All right, enjoy your holidays.
Good for you. Thank you. Okay, technology.
Good evening. We had, during this time period, we completed 126 work orders. We just had our training this last month, and this time Ethan was the one that did the presentation, and he did it on the Apple volume program, which was really great. Trip Tracker, we've made a lot of progress with that. We've got all the data imported, and we're, we're just working on testing that right now. We ran cabling for the keypads at the primary to get ready for the installation by Midwest, which has been completed. And the last thing on our list was, we updated DLC software on all the computers. Any questions?
Shay.
We're getting close. We sent our final pictures to them. I had to sign off saying it was okay to use them, that they are not copyright protected. Because Apple and I guess Android have that as they go to the app. We're in the final stages of that. So, they have taken next week or so off for Christmas, so we're plugging along. It's taking a little longer than we want, but we want it to roll out right.
They told us to keep it mobile.
They did, they said it was, it would be mobile by target date.
Anybody else, did you have a question? I was going to say that, Shay. Just letting you know. She knows how to do it. Yeah. Okay, our financial report is next. It's Ginge.
I'll make it short, too. Give you a brief rundown of what we have going on. You have included the, I included the overview of the financials for you again this month. We're still running just very consistently with last year. Revenue's up just ever so slightly compared to this point last year. Expenditures also, but we know that's because we did that payroll a little bit earlier this year than last year. That timing's a little different. I've completed all my required annual reporting, the post-audit reporting that we have to do. There's several institutions that I have different types of reporting to get out. First of all, DESI, they get copies of all of our stuff. So, I have the DESI reporting done with the Federal Audit Clearing House. The auditors helped me digitally file some requirements with them because we get federal funds. There's a Missouri accounting portal that I have to update all of our debt on that. And then, the Emma reporting that is required with our bonds. We have continuing disclosure reporting that we have to do on our bonds, and Speaker Nicholas helped me out with that. The continuing disclosure is so anybody who bought our bonds can go out there and look on a public site and pull information about us, financial information. It includes things like enrollment, largest taxpayer, sources of revenues, our historical tax valuation, debt info ratios, things like that. The investors are going to look at. All that is complete. I just wanted to know we got all that taken care of for the year, done in the timeline it's supposed to be done in. But as far as revenue at the state level, our revenue is starting to come in now from the county, which is really good. I'm hoping I'll still get another payment in December, so that we're tracking a little better than last year, but it's hard to tell. Last year, we got a payment on December 30th. I won't know that until, until that time, right? So, I'm confident that it's still coming on the way we need it to. At the state level, the general revenue's still looking good. It's still up a little bit, so that's going to be good for our formula come the end of the year. Prop C revenue's tracking higher, which is also good. Gaming revenue's got flat. That's my question. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay. We also have an update about the Employee Recognition Dinner. It's a report from Mr. Reno.
Excuse me. On May 18th, I asked you guys if you wanted to host the recognition dinner in March with some significant changes. in March with some significant changes. Um, and still wanna do some changes to it. One of those changes was to have it posted at high school as opposed to the civic center. Uh, logistics-wise, that's not working out like I had dreamed it would, um, and so I'm asking if you mind if we move it to back to the civic center.
I didn't like the movie. Does anybody have a problem with that?
It's, it's either gonna be the second or the sixteenth probably of March. You didn't tell me you messed up anything, it's just, it's just not working out like I thought we'd do it together. It doesn't, it's, the thought process that Scott Rehner said is not coming to, you know...
Okay, I think we're okay with that.
Thank you.
So now, hopefully you won't have nightmares. You can dream about it in a better light. Okay. Um, we have no unfinished business, correct?
Correct.
So, we're gonna forge ahead and, and get into the new business. Um, we are looking at, um, our bond issue language, the, uh, what will be on the ballot, and that was sent out to us in the- email.
It's correct. Forty-eight hour update, I believe you never see. Um, and if I may, prior to putting that on the floor, you have basically two options in front of you. Uh, option one includes the Highway A property, and I believe option two does not. So, what that means is, as a district, uh, Ray and I and, and Mr. Marino and high school staff have kinda sat down, talked about what, um, long-range upcoming facility things we're gonna have, what are our needs. One immediate need that we see is, within two years, we're gonna have to replace the turf at the football field. Um, it's in year nine, Ms. Marino? What year's it in?
It's in year eleven.
Thank you. Year eleven, and the standard life is?
Ten.
Ten, nine to ten. So, we're, our turf is in still a decent shape, however, within two years left to be replaced. The facilities committee was talking, and one of the things that we fear is if we put the turf in a bond issue, uh, it could show our public that rather than our facilities and the educational environment, we think that the turf on the football field's more important, and it's not. Uh, I believe it's student athletes, not athletic students. To me, that cannot go in that. Long-range plan would be, if we did include the Highway A property, we could take the money we've been paying around one-hundred-and-fifty thousand, uh, and save that for two years, and you will have almost enough money to replace the entire turf field. So, that's kind of what, uh, I know we had visited with in the facilities committee, what would be the best way to do that and be good steward of the public money. My recommendation, as you see at the bottom of that executive summary, is to include the Highway A property, um, and I see Lorenzo nodding his head back there. Lorenzo was with us from Stifel Nicolaus, and we've had another visit on what's most prudent with tax dollars, and as he visited with you, he said there's still no change to that, right Lorenzo?
Exactly correct.
Paying the property off with the bond issues, and then allocating that, those first payments to pay off what would, would have been the Highway A property, your saving in the long run on interest. Um, so with that, you have drafted, uh, Sean Flynn is back beside Lorenzo from Gilmore and Bell Attorneys. This is the ballot language, and you'll see a couple of things I do want to point out here to you. Uh, no matter what you choose here in the yellow, uh, on either section, five remains the same. And what that does, it, it allows the district to recoup some of your costs you paid for your architect, and you're saying out of these funds, we will pay ourselves back for that, 'cause you're paying for your architect upfront. Uh, now, if the issue does not pass, if the initiative does not pass, of course, those costs will have to be absorbed by the district, but if they do pass, that's to be clearly written what you're gonna be doing with the money. So, um, Sean, did I leave anything out? Do you wanna add anything?
No, I've had to cover everything.
All right, I appreciate that. So, um, the facilities committee did do a little, um, recommendation on the language. If you, if you pull that up, does everyone have that in front of them? Um, we wanted to add some key words. Uh, we felt the security improvements were very important, and we wanted the public to see that, uh, first and foremost, right after, um, construction of special education classrooms, but we also wanted to add, and general ed classrooms as needed, because we didn't want the public to think we were just building special needs classrooms. We're building classrooms for kids, and we're gonna house the students in there. As you well know, we wanna move our special needs students out of the modular unit, units at the junior high, up to the building. Uh, there are a lot of things that have been talked about. This language, it was important for us to leave it broad enough to where the public has input on what to do with the money, and I appreciate Sean helping us with that, because to me, you want the public to be able to have, okay, what are the security improvements, and this is what we think you need to do. Um, otherwise, you would not really be seeking input for your public town hall meetings. Uh, the next thing was, um, we wanted to really look at that word, expected. No, ain't, no tax increase or no increases expected to the current, uh, service levy of the school districts, and I went round and round with Sean, 'cause I, I wanted to use the word guarantee, and he said you can't guarantee anything, 'cause there's nothing guaranteed in life, uh, 'cause you never know what's gonna happen ten years from now. If something happens with the debt service of the district and you have to raise it, you're liable, and people can come back and file suit against you for improper ballot language. So, Sean says you have to leave it expected, so that's what's on there.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, on the construction of the special education classrooms and, and the general education classrooms as needed, so we fully intend to use some of the bond issue money to construct classrooms?
That was, yes, the intent.
Okay, because I had concerns that as a board, we hadn't, you know, we looked at the facilities needs on the chart that was given, but the classrooms were not on there, and we had only the special needs, and I didn't want that in the bond unless we really were going to do it, because I didn't want, you know, mislead.
If we don't, we're gonna have to put more modular units out there, 'cause heats are falling apart. I mean, our point is-
As long as we fully intend to do that.
Yes, that was my understanding from the facilities committee, that the recommendation is yes. Okay, so, now, whichever one you'd like to go on some further.
Okay, so do we wanna call one?
I'll make a motion for the filing of the Highway A property.
I said. Any other thoughts or discussion on that? Okay.
You said, yes, yes, I did. The Highway A included, I believe.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, show of hands to approve the motion, this proposal. Okay, very good. I think that was the next thing to do.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. I have to change my page here, sorry. Next item has to do with the bond campaign brochure. Did you want to show that before we?
You're welcome.
Yeah, we have a hard copy.
I have, yes, ma'am, I have one, I do. Now, these are the Aaron Corman printed versions, so they're not really folded nice and neat, and they're not really, you know...
Chromatically correct.
Well, they're chromatically correct, they're just not pretty like the architects do. I hope not, you need to, you need to power something out.
Thank you. You can have it, just, uh, okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, um, this design, uh, has, well, guys, it's, it's taken months.
Three or four revisions.
Three or four revisions. Um, one of the things that we really wanted to focus on was encouraging the public to be a part of the process, which, which are the discussions and communicating with the public, uh, and getting their input and getting a finger on the pulse of what they believe are the important things in the district. So, you see in the, in the very middle of the, the page, kinda when you open the back of the brochure up, in the direct middle, it says be part of the process. We've listed, uh, the workshop dates. We've also talked about what are the objectives, and what areas are we focusing on, and you'll see in the center, learning, wellness, again, security and safety, technology and maintenance and code compliance, and just a brief little, um, synopsis of why that's important and why that needs to be a focus. We've moved over with, um, effective learning environments, why we believe it's important to have an effective learning environment, and we put a little, uh, I should say, we, I didn't, architects put, put this format together. Uh, we put in here a map, so the public can see kinda where the facilities are. Uh, some parents that have kids that, you know, say the junior high, they've never been to high school yet, they don't know what that built, where it is or what it looks like. Uh, if, if you see the mines under construction in the left-hand corner of the brochure, that's actually, these pictures are all of our kids. Initially, when this was made, it was just random snapshots and pictures. The letter from me, I did not want to include, uh, the architects said they felt it was important to put in there. I thought we could use that space for other things, um, but I was told we need to leave it in there. You see on the back cover, the local, again, patron, we mail this out, or we make it available to the public, and it, again, addresses the meetings. We try to have those in alternating, uh, nights. We didn't wanna have them all on Monday or all on Tuesday. We wanted to make it available to meet the needs of the public based upon their work schedules. And what the architects are doing, they're developing these little boards, I shouldn't, this is my little board, but they're developing large boards of this format, and the, the pamphlet will actually, brochure will be here in the corner for the public to take out and take with them, and one will be in each building. What they would like to do, it's my understanding, correct or wrong there, is they're actually going to do a board for each building, and the boards are similar to this. They're not finalized yet, so I don't have a copy for everyone. This will be, this board's gonna be the district office, so it looks like this. The next board that you have will be, this is the high school, and this board will be displayed in the high school, and it's, what was it?
Thirty-two by forty.
Okay, thirty-two by forty. Um, and it will, on one side, one column will talk about what's the, what are we gonna work on, and here are some pictures for us to look at, and then have a map of, of the building to show where each thing is. So, the public during ballgames can go and look and say, hey, what are we gonna do with the entry, where is that? Uh, and, and similar, the other buildings, like here is, uh, the junior high, and, uh, a lot of parents are gonna look right over there and say, okay, there's gonna be heat and air in there, 'cause if you've ever been to a concert down there, we need air conditioning down there, heat especially, well, and heat, but I can live with being cold, I can't live with being hot. So, uh, and safety and security, you'll see is on each one of these, uh, classrooms, especially you're gonna see down here at the teacher parking lot. One of the things we also talked about, and I appreciate Director Stevenson bringing up, was more parking. We need to try to get some more parking somewhere for these parents, especially the elementary building. Um, we talked about that, and it might have to get bumped off the list based upon the other major needs that we have, uh, but we are adding that, I think, to the list right there.
On the secondary list.
On the secondary list, uh, for the public to see. All right, so that's a little bit about that. Right now, the, the game plan is, uh, I put an amount in here of fifteen hundred. I think I might have overshot that, we didn't know. The architects told me today it's two hundred, I believe in fifty dollars, to run five hundred, and that's the initial run that we can distribute to the public, starting, uh, in January when the facilities open again. That's kinda the game plan.
And that's two-hundred-and-fifty with each board?
Right.
Can I, can I ask a couple of questions about the report?
Sure.
In your first paragraph on the, on your letter, uh, where you state that we're challenging curriculum to compare them as twenty-first educational learners?
Should be twenty-first century.
Okay. And, um, the other concern that I had was that it shows, um, that I, it, to me, it implies that we're gonna use some of this bond issue money for technology, such as computers and tablets and smart boards and projectors. I didn't see that in the, in the proposition language at all.
Tell me where you're reading.
By the picture.
I didn't, I, you don't read it, but you, it, it, the picture implies that, I know.
The picture of the kids working?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, well, the way we looked at it was the district has integrated.
You've already?
Meaning we've already done that for technology integration in order to support the curriculum and help since achieve their goals, the district has integrated technology in the classroom.
Okay. You don't think that the public will, will think that, okay, we want, we wanna use, I mean, I just was afraid that they'd think, okay, we're gonna use some of this money for our computers and tablets, and we would be paying for these for twenty years if we use bond issue money for that.
No, I, I think that my takeaway is, if you read under technology and maintenance, it says by, your support of this will allow us to take care of the facilities, which in turn can help us reallocate funds to support the technology that is soon to be outdated. Rather than your money being pulled and, and spent on fixing the heat exchangers or putting air conditioning in the, uh, junior high gymnasium, we're gonna be able to use local funds, or funds currently in the district, to replace these things.
Okay, I understand that.
But, I mean, we can rework it.
Our community's not gonna understand that.
I think the idea of all the pictures was, you know, representing all the different things going on on our campus.
I, I just felt like the community is gonna see that, and they're going to think-
Their perception, their own.
Their perception is going to be that we're gonna use this money for techno, for computers and smart boards. And the other concern that I had is that this print is extremely small, and, uh, an elderly voter in our community is-.
Okay.
I wasn't, I'm not that old.
I know, and they're not even gonna read this, because they won't be able to.
Well, at the very top, you say our district objectives in red, it's technology and maintenance, and you have a picture of kids at the library.
Right.
It does get a perception that part of the bond's going for technology.
Going technology, so, and, and like I said, I don't think they're gonna wanna pay for smart boards for twenty years. I mean-
They would probably question that. I can see people coming back and questioning.
Okay.
Do you have any input here?
I think, I think I just did it there, but I mean, I can see their point, their point too, and I think that's kinda the fine line we want, of trying to get as much out as we can, and as limited a space as we have.
On those boards, what's highlighted red? Does it specify, does it, technology and maintenance is a red subject? What's on those boards where they can see?
Well, if we handed out to you the list of stuff that includes technology and maintenance in red?
So, the parents look at those boards, and students, and, you know, you look at the board, and they see where those-
They won't have, yeah, but. I'm looking right here. One of them is provide, um, install cameras around the district. Well, that's gonna take wiring, that's gonna take, you know, CAT five E cable, which is technology cable, uh, security upgrades, keypads and access system, which, again, is gonna take the wiring. That's considered, and, you know, technology, I think, is why that fell under that.
But, the picture doesn't show that. The picture shows kids with computers, and the implication here with the picture is that we're gonna be purchasing computers and smart boards, and, I think, I mean, that's what I think the community-
It's pretty simple. All we do is mark that out.
Change the picture.
I'll take the picture out. We'll take, we'll take the whole thing out there. We can eliminate the students on the computers and everything underneath it.
You know, you could take that out and realistically drop your empowering students down, and you can make the, the deck a little bigger.
Not a problem, that's what we can do.
You mean enlarge the-
Yeah, yeah, drop the empowering students on there, drop that down, pull that deck over, make that a little bigger.
And what about the soccer picture? I, yeah, the soccer picture too, it implies that, you know...
Okay, so you wanna take that and empowering students out?
Do you have any picture of the primary kids on there at all? I see a lot of big ones.
Yeah, this is there to heighten.
We don't have it out here, so.
I tell you, you don't say, mom, I'm gonna need a magnifier.
Big circle, front page, wrap the middle.
Yep.
The big circle, the little one.
Personally, yeah, I am just gonna be as, I usually am. If I get this in the mail, I'm gonna look at the pictures, the headlines, there's too many words here and they're too small. I would not take the time to read it, honestly. Um, and I've always had a problem with no tax increase, because I know what that means, but I thought FASIS was very smart when they were successful with the same tax, because you're continuing the same tax instead of, uh, a no tax.
You are correct. It is an extension.
Yes, it's an extension.
Which is, we are very clear, we want to present to the public.
Right, and I understand all of that.
So, you, you wanna put the word same taxes rather than no taxes. No tax increase, you want to say taxes, that's the same. But again, we get back to that whole, what happens if taxes go up? Twenty years, ten years from now?
Well, that's not going to be any different than no tax.
Well, there, that's what the question marks for.
I know, but, the other comment that I had is that when I very first looked at this, if there was a time here, because it took me a while before I actually found the time of it.
Okay, we can add a time, okay.
But it, I mean, it's really, I would not take the time to read it this much, and I kind of agree with you.
I didn't want it in there.
Well, when I opened this.
Did I not say that?
You just said this.
I said I do not want, multiple times, I do not want this in there.
Well, when I opened this up, this was the first step that I saw, and should it be coming from you? It should be coming from the board.
I understand that, a hundred percent agree.
You know, so I agree with you.
I just assumed we completely cut that off and have some other stuff over.
And make it bigger and, because we do say it can be a bigger space, and I haven't really read it all yet.
What's in quotes?
I need to put that quote somewhere with just your little name, but a picture and that whole, that whole tri-fold with you. I'm being rude, I'm sorry.
No, he said the same thing.
That's what I opened it up to.
I said, well, you vote, you vote for me, I didn't want it in there. But, the thing was, being a student at school, you did have some comment, you need to have a blur.
You have some comment, but.
I even shrunk the picture when I sent it back to them and they blew it back up.
Whole tri-fold.
It doesn't need to be anywhere in there.
The picture, if you don't, I mean, you can have that blur, but just Dr. Aaron Harmon, superintendent. Now, it's in this time, and I really did not take the time to read it. Yeah, I wanted to sit down and you tell me about what this says, okay, but I might come to your town, I'll call you, even if I do, but I wouldn't take the time to, we have a time to. But.
Well, I think the objective should be much better front and center, should be the first thing, you know, when you.
Well, I wanted to shrink this map over, you know, because if you see you have whole point subdivision, I wanted to scoop that over to give you more room. But it's using Adobe ID, has anyone ever heard of that program?
Sure.
Okay, well, may I should have called y'all a pair to get this stuff? Adobe ID is a tough program to run if you're not used to it. All right, so here, here's where we are. I can contact them and we can cut.
Oh, sure.
All this first tri-fold out, we can cut student computers out. I'm still unclear on what you want to do with empowering students. If you want me to cut a soccer, a student with a soccer ball out, and cut all that, we can do that.
I think the text is fine, if we could make it bigger.
Okay.
And maybe instead of so much narrative bullets of concepts.
Makes it shorter.
Yeah, instead of the true narrative, the district works for bullet, assisting the overall fund. I just know that it would be, what's the text that I have?
Okay, so do we, what do we do from here then? Just send it to somebody else? Maybe get together and get inputs, you want to jot your thoughts down and give it back to Dr. Harmon and.
Well, I've got most of the thoughts. I mean, what we're running into is if you want these boards displayed, you want this information out to the public so they can get these dates on their calendar, we're going to have to have a special meeting to approve this.
That's fine, that's fine.
You know, that's what we're going to have to do. Would, you want a couple of these different options? What do you?
That would be good.
My only other suggestion is we have three pictures of student athletes. What about our other groups?
Three pictures of student.
Football, soccer, cheer. What about other groups within our district? I'd probably leave it to one athletic group and bring in maybe choir, maybe.
Here's your problem, here's what you have to understand.
You know.
I get your point.
Right.
But I want, draw your attention to the cheerleaders. What you wind up doing is if you don't have a picture, you have multiple kids standing shoulder to shoulder, you're only going to be focusing on one kid. Similar to like football, there were more players standing around there, but that's smaller picture when it narrows in. And the primary kids in the center was a great picture because you had several little kids together. I mean, that's what you run into if you don't, like the choir, it's going to be tough to get a picture of the choir, isn't it?
Well, I was just, I'm against diversity.
We sent the architect about eight pictures, nine pictures.
Awesome, that's true.
And they got to pick which ones would work.
Did they not, did they not find a graduation one? Because the idea was to have from beginning to end of a school career in the brochure.
I can look and see if we have it. The problem is, it's the quality of the picture.
Because you're going to.
What about our yearbook, Sal? They have lots of pictures, would they have some that we could go through?
Go through?
Or ask them to maybe send us some?
Yeah, they probably have ten thousand if you go through, but you know, if you want a particular post, we want graduation pictures, send us some.
Yeah, right. I believe Mr. Paul has a suggestion.
If we were looking at like our other non-athletic activities, like choir band, I was thinking not just, like, not just like the concert pictures, but then, like I know for choir, we take all-state pictures, or like band, we take all-state pictures, where you just have like those three or two people that make it standing shoulder to shoulder with the director.
Sure.
That would probably fit in one of those circles.
Okay.
Oh, the other thing is, where are we putting the boards? You guys, you talked about the boards for the maps. Are those going in the offices or what is?
Yes.
Okay, because that was vandalism.
Yeah. Yeah, we decided they would go in the offices where the secretaries could have monitored them during school day.
By camera.
Events, that gave some identity in the lobby.
In advance that we were going to move them out into the lobby, so people see them coming into the gymnasiums or to the choir concerts.
Okay, so we're looking for just a smaller font and rearranging it a little bit and gaining the different pictures.
So if you revision, and then he said printing would be.
No, no, he already has the quote.
Okay, so we're not voting on this this evening then.
Okay, thank you. I got to send it off because they had to get it from the printer's business, and so we can table it and, well, actually, they had it in the, you have the discussion, so you can skip it.
Yeah. Okay, next item is talking about seeking bids for the attorney for the district, that I have, I have plenty of that information, I mean, some of your sharing of this.
What we did was look to see if we had a contract with current legal counsel. Some of the board members said it might be prudent to go out to determine if other legal counsel was warranted for the district, and we do not have a contract with our current attorney. Basically, it's.
Two feet and something.
Right, I was going for retainer.
Retainer.
We have, we have, basically, a retainer. Our average cost for attorney, prior to my rob, we were spending between forty-two and forty-five, it dropped to about thirty-two to thirty-five. Last year, it was more closer to forty thousand, so that's kind of what you're spending on attorney fees annually. If you want us to go out to attorney, I mean, that's going to be, I'll have to contact some other districts to see how they do that. You're probably going to want to interview people, look at portfolios, look at who they represent, those kinds of things.
And, and we're seeking bids because we have the intent of changing attorneys, is that what this is about?
I'm open to looking at it.
I'm curious to see.
Our current attorneys, I feel, led us in a wrong direction thus far.
Absolutely.
And so I think that's worth looking into for our community. I mean, there's local law firms that are even doing just school district work now.
I'd be leery of that if they haven't had a lot of school law experience.
I think our current attorney handles more of a metropolitan environment, and we're more liberal.
Definitely more liberal.
Right, I really think we need to. Is there a financial cost to us to go out for bid, except for an ad?
No.
Okay, so what, what would it cost?
Anywhere from two hundred and fifty to fifteen hundred.
That's a good.
Per ad. Well, if you're running the leader, it's going to cost different than if you're running the same little post, and you might run it in Kansas City paper, I mean, you're going to have to go out to look for attorneys. And the reason I say that is, I mean, we've had attorneys in the past that have done a great job for the district. There are some things, local attorneys, if they're not privy to, they don't really understand special ed law, so they'd have to send us out to other firms that handle special ed law. So it depends upon what the attorneys can do, what their scope of duties and range of expertise is in.
How long have we had this attorney, as a district, had this attorney?
Uh, let's see, Dr. Sean Hoff hired them, and I believe.
Jack Stewart before Dr. Ron hired.
You're telling me seven or eight years?
Six to eight.
Six to eight, I see some heads nodding, about six to eight years. So Dr. Sean Hoff brought them in after Jack Stewart.
So there's, there's not a, like, a plan ever in place to just kind of go out for a new set of eyes or?
Typically, the board is who hires their legal counsel. And when the board is not happy with their legal counsel, the board goes out and seeks other legal counsel. So no, from administrative standpoint, it's a different thing going out and getting a bid for a company that's going to do your computers, or a company's going to do any other services that your paths. That's a little different line. We already have that kind of stuff. All right, so what we'll try to do is visit around, come up with a plan, I'll see how we need to work with that, what we need to do. I'll try to get that out starting in January sometime, report back to you. We'll probably schedule a special meeting if you want to interview attorneys, that'll probably be in February-ish, and kind of see how that goes. Is everyone okay with that timeframe there? Okay.
So that gets us to basically the same kind of thing, except.
You really don't need a motion here, you just, everyone has a consensus, we want to go out and kind of seek other legal counsel, let's see what's out there. So I really don't need a.
A motion.
A motion there.
So that gets us to the auditor doing the same thing.
Well, now, no, because speaking with Mrs. Gange, you currently have another two-year contract with your current auditors through this year 2018, so you really can't go out to bid there. However, I do recommend, and I think it would behoove the district to increase, which is going to cost you a little more, the, the random sampling of transactions that our auditors do. The auditors come in, they don't tell Mrs. Gange or myself, they just start picking stuff. We want to see this, we want to see the requisition, the PO, we want to see the payment, and they cross-reference everything. So I think it would be a good idea to say, rather than doing fifty, we want you to do two hundred and fifty.
Increase the.
Whatever, we want you to increase the volume of the random sample.
So roughly, what's, would be the difference in price?
I have, we have not even, this is just my recommendation, we haven't spoken to them about it.
Well, for.
But we can get that back to you.
We're not going to do this.
For the contract, you have them, like I said, for two more years.
Right.
And at that time, you can seek to go out, you won't be able to break that contract.
We did that out last time, there was a wide range in price, and they do so many school districts, I think they're real specialized, I mean, they do schools in Kansas City too, that they look at certain things, and, and speaking to some other people, they do some testing that other firms don't, like some test controls of the internal controls, not all auditor would do that, so.
So we can get back to you on that.
Especially in this day and age of internal controls.
I'd be curious with the price.
Right.
How, how soon can they do the audit so that the next time we have more time to read it?
And I'm glad you brought that up. What the auditors do is, as they start the audit, they compile the data, they have an initial run, well, they come in August, September, yeah, July, excuse me, gather some information, late June, early July, as soon as we get done with the school year, gather some information, and then they come back for about three to four days, up to a week, in-house. And what winds up happening is they send letters out to people, the banks and the attorneys. Well, before the audit can be complete, they have to send a final notice to the attorney asking, are you currently under basically new lawsuits? Have any lawsuits been filed? Because that could change from June to October. Well, sometimes they're waiting to get information from everyone, whether it's your bank, your attorney, to get the file complete. But I spoke with Miss Gange, and we agree that we can work to speed that process up, definitely a week or two, but we're hoping a month. So you can have several weeks to look over that audit rather than days, if that makes sense. But we've already been speaking to Dan Jones about that. And what we can do is come back to you in January, Mrs. Gange, we'll get an idea of what increased random sampling would cost the district. Right now, we're paying, is it eight?
Eleven thousand one fifties.
Eleven.
And then, I mean, that was a sign of practice limits.
So it's set for five years not to go live? Okay.
But if we change the sampling?
If that. All right, so we'll get that back to you again.
Can that sampling be done in that shorter timeframe that we're asking for?
Sure. I don't see, if you're pulling fifty, you can pull two hundred and fifty, plus basically the work's on that young lady right there and her crew to get the information.
Well, that's not, I mean, they have to look through, they look through everything.
They look through it all.
They invoice the dates, the, you know, that it follows the right process, and then, you know, they don't just pull accounts payable, they look at the account payment checks, they look at payroll checks, they look at the dirty deposit stubs, they compare those back to the contracts, making sure, you know, each payment is correct. So, I mean, there's, when they do that testing, it's pretty thorough. And then they randomly pick a month or two of credit cards to go through those, and we just let them pick whatever they want.
Asking for a shorter timeframe.
Shorter timeframe, right. So we'll see what we can do and get back to you, okay?
Okay. Moving on, I'm looking for the approval of summer school, getting that set. I did have a question, this is, this is just approving the summer school itself, not necessarily staff yet.
Correct. This is, can we do it? All right, go ahead.
In here, to retain the administrators from last year's summer school.
To retain?
To keep them for this coming summer school, two of them, third one is left the district.
But it's not teachers, that's not.
No. This is just to get the process rolling here in January, so we have ample time to get everything set up. But we're going to keep the same administrators, that's. Two of the three, the third one is left, so we would go open up that third position.
I move that we approve the full summer school program, but post all three administrative positions.
But to do what?
But to post the three administrative positions, to open them up. Consider potential.
Do I have a second to that motion? Second for Mr. Stevens, discussion please.
Understanding that, perfectly fine, if that's what the board chooses to do, it will kind of put us behind the eight ball in the planning process and the things that go along with that, just.
We need to get to that part.
So the motion stands to approve of summer school for this coming June, and that's the only thing that we're looking at, or approving at this moment.
And post, post the three admin positions, was the motion?
Full summer school?
I'll post.
The full summer school.
Right, but instead of.
Post all three.
And post all three admin jobs.
Positions, unless you want to split and approve here and then have executive session and then deal with the administrative after.
That is most definitely what you can do, yes, which might be a good idea.
I bet that might be a better, since we didn't get to have executive session for.
So you'll have to.
So I would like to, okay, I'm sorry about, we're going to do this differently.
No.
Okay, and then possibly.
She wants to approve the full summer school program, but not the administrators at this time. She wants to talk about that in executive session.
Table that until after. Table that until after executive session. That was what I said. Okay. And so whoever seconded that?
And I am, yes.
Okay. So we are only voting or approving the summer school session, and that's it at this minute. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Show of hands to approve the summer school program. And then the rest will put into exam. Okay? Pardon me? Then we may come out of exam and do this, but- Come back in. Right. At this point, it is- But for the moment, they will- Right. Okay. Letter F has to do with the submitting of the professional organizations' negotiation proposals. They would like to, MST A-
Correct.
Pardon me. Would like to submit their 2017, 2018 negotiation, negotiation proposal, no later than the board's April meeting, 2017.
Which is what you did last year with both groups. However, the NEA wants to retain that board policy to-
To do it.
To do it in February. But MST A would like to get more relevant data prior to making the proposal effective and presenting it forward. We don't, I think it's a great idea, actually, and-
Why wouldn't we do one and up the other? That's what I was going to say. And I would like to go back to some of the discussion we had last year, that the two groups couldn't present one package to us instead of two separate ones. That they do, they get on board with each other, and as a teacher organization in the district.
I think it's a great idea. In my opinion, though, it might be a tad late.
This year?
December, to get MST and NEA to align their goals, January to propose to you by February. If you tell them now-
Postponed it.
But to do that, you're changing your board policy. Right now, you're just allowing it for this year and not changing it indefinitely. But I agree, I think one unified proposal is a lot easier for the board to work with, and then two proposals that you have to bring together.
But we did discuss that with- Yes, this is, going there again, is that we have already talked about that. And so what happened with that discussion, et cetera? Does it just drop dead until somebody up here brings it up again?
Can we put that from the policy committee?
We can.
That's where we discussed it as a matter of fact.
We put it in place for next year.
Okay. Miss Beth Dan will make us a note. I see you writing now. We will put that in front of the policy committee for review this year for change next year.
And we haven't met yet.
No, we haven't yet, that's all we've had of procedures.
Because the way this is set up now, it's actually going to be done in February and then again in May with each organization.
They're going to come up and hand it to you and that's it. But you're, as a board, you normally have not done anything with it until April, March. You started looking at it prior to anything in June is normally when we meet and-
It was June, I believe. So is there any advantage or benefit to having them earlier for central office?
No, no, absolutely not. Because what happens is, in my mind, if you wait, if you present it in February, you don't have a clear understanding of whether this is going to be. Waiting closer to April is better for the staff and you, because you don't have all that meat you have to carve off the bone.
And therefore, their proposals can be-
Yes. Their proposal is all right. It's not as broad, it's not shooting for the moon.
I'm okay with waiting till April, and then the policy committee can change it for the next year. Or look at it.
That's, Dr. Isaacson and I and Ms. Silverbrand all agree, that's the best thing for us, because we're not having to sift through all this stuff and say, no, we can't do this. They're more asking for what's reasonable rather than beyond expectation.
So to go to policy, but we can, as a board, we can send that to the policy committee and say, this is what we want. We want, yes. And so it becomes more of a formality- Yes. Than anything.
Correct.
But for this year? You have to decide- The proposal at the moment, though, or the motion, has to do with accepting MST A's proposal.
In April.
Right.
Rather than in February.
And NEA has not brought that, pardon me?
I think the motion did accept it.
MST A's request.
Yes.
And Eric seconded it. Any other discussion about that issue? All in favor? Okay. We are going to discuss a little bit, the Forecast Five. It's, we want to have a motion here to approve the purchase of the Forecast Five subscription. It's a license agreement, correct?
Yes. I believe Dr. Isaacson passed some stuff out to you, so you might want to look at prior to making a proposal.
Yeah, I think it would be best to discuss it first.
All right, Dr. Isaacson, do you have an extra copy of these that you can give so we can put up on the camera?
You know what, if you go to the, there's a PowerPoint. On the four package. What do you want? What, if you will slide up, this will go, this slide. What Forecast Five is, is it is an analytic suite and a data suite that allows us access to all of our state information. If you scroll up, there's a PowerPoint that is you, just scroll down, excuse me. Oh, continue on there. And there's what's called Five Site, and that gives us instant access to all the state data, financial data, going back for ten years. Our academic data, the salaries of every employee in the state of Missouri. It was like three minutes ago, so we're able to compare ourselves on our enrolling trends, staffing analysis, negotiations. Where do we sit as far as with our peers, not just in Jefferson County, but schools similar size with the same family reduced population, like Carl Junction, Kearney, Mary McValley, to see where we can find areas that we can improve. What are people that are having success that have similar backgrounds, similar students, similar financial, so we can reach out and look to improve not just from an HR standpoint, but financial reporting, curriculum areas, et cetera. And so we would use this information, it's an analysis tool that uses not just the state data, if you can keep going down, doing budget projections. It dives into the ASBR report and all of our financial information, and we talk about transparency. And Ms. Gange can, I want to speak totally to the financial stuff, but that's a huge governance in our day and age. Because we have to be transparent as a school district. And when you talk about school finance, it's confusing. You know, the different ledger is bringing that to a layman's level, so a community member can just see and have access to the information and it's presented in a way that makes sense to somebody that doesn't, you know, totally look at school financial stuff. Credit, presentation, student performance analysis, benchmarking, negotiations planning, internal communications, some of the other items. Going on down, right here, there's a quick report, this is our information. How do we compare with our peers as far as teacher salaries, teacher staffing? And those types of information. Going down, using it to, how do we expend, what's our total expenditure, how do we allocate our money? Is there recent upticks in money? That type of information, next. Going down, comparing with our peers and transportation spending, looking at attendance data. If you could just keep kind of going down through that. Using our map results. This will literally take the information and track Tyler Isaacson all the way through his education and show, it does a predictive of like, this is how he's proceeded. So you can look, kids were multi-age, now they're seniors, is it beneficial? And looking at, to do that in a, we have so much data in schools, we talk about data all the time. We have piles of it, it's the time to put it all together, where it makes sense and it's actually usable. You know, benchmarks as far as students per teacher. I mean, there's so much information, I just put some key highlight items in here. Live birth information, taking Jefferson County, Missouri, live birth information. And you can see that the trend based on the live births to enrollment, to be predictive of, hey, for staffing needs, do we need to be prepared to be going up and down and moving it around and for long-term planning? This is our information on kindergarten versus live births in our area, all right? Five Cast is using that information, it's a different program, but it's all part of it, uses that information, our infinite campus information, our school finance information to do multi-year projections for the board, for Ms. Gange. And for, if we have a one percent change, what is it done to over five years? Boom, so you see it right then and there. Okay, so we're able to provide that type of information. It also creates web, pulls that ASBR report, financial ledger data, and puts it in however format that we want if we want to frequently ask questions. Where a community member just clicks that, and it opens up and explains it in easy-to-read pie charts as opposed to the general ledger and those types of information. So you build a transparency site. Here, it's hard to see, here is our general fund ledger, and it points it out to where you're able to see that. But we could break it down even further by line item. This goes all the way down into specific line items. Fund balance comparisons over the years, et cetera. This was one of those links for a website where you just click on, I can't see the question there, but you click on a question, a bar graph would come up to show, okay? This is some of, I looked and got some information on how other districts use the information to put in easy-to-read formats to show the enrollment, how it's changed over the years, and it's a much easier-to-read format for the general public. Here, where are we today? Shows our spending by staff type, but to put things, just to make it easier. So, checking budget forecast, and down at the bottom, there's a tool called Five Maps. If you go up, continue to go down, that's kind of the final piece of it, it all works together. This is a pretty unique program. It ties into Google Maps and uses our infinite campus system. So like, each of those dots there is a rep, somebody that lives and goes to our school. In your honor roll, you could do that, all my kids are A's, boom, and it goes to their house. Student behaviors, boom. Career reduced, you know, bus routes and stuff like that. Where is population, you know, even as we're talking to the bottom issue, where most of our kids are, like in this area, we're not, we don't want to put that many signs over in this area. There's, depending on where we're approaching, some of that type of information. We're on student performance analytics, and one, a really neat tool to this, if you go back up a couple the other way, is we're able to, in time as we're building, create dashboards. So whereas, I've talked with Ms. Silverbrand on this, trying to get some of the curriculum things in, is it looks up to our infinite campus, and we had have an advisor to help set this up, especially in year three, because, or year one, getting so much of this, but a teacher would be able to, we could set this dashboard that's, we use this Walker as an example. She comes in in August, and this is her class, and it has their general, what's their attendance level? It's literally usable data, their behaviors, you know, and as administrators, is looking at this when we're doing kind of the class scheduling and parent requests, oh, there's a lot of, attempt kids, the average absence in this class is at eleven days. And then sometimes that just happens by chance, but try to be more predictive in those types of situations. So, some unique things to that, that we were trying to expand on and use. And the goal is, you know, a product of this costs money. It's a lot of money. And to try to use it, to save money, to be, use our data to make, that you have the data piece and balance that with, you know, there's an art in education, the people piece, what's the roots on the ground? And putting all those different pieces together to try to make the very best decisions and be as transparent as we can with our community.
Now, did we budget for this already?
Yes.
This was already budgeted.
And is this what you've been using the last couple of years on a trial?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and they gave me-
Well, I knew you had issues too.
I had some issues.
Sorry.
So, no, it's-
So you've actually used it, it's not, yeah.
Oh, I've used it.
Well tested. So this is, I said it earlier, this would be a really nice Christmas present for you.
The thing is, I think for all, for just, it's, if it's just an HR or a finance, this helps-
You'd be using more than one.
Oh, yes, and that's just it, is to start, you know, as a teacher, as a billing administrator, and in my career role, we have so much data. But it's sometimes, it's just data, and you can use it in a time, workable format, there's just not enough data.
How many licenses do you get with this? Does every administrator get access to it, or just you?
We hit three users, and we would get that information. I think the key is, we would have, and teach people how to use it. But I think most of this, because this is pretty in-depth, most of it would probably be a central office working with Melissa and some principals. And so then we're able to give it to a staff member, here's your data, so you can use it to do what you do best and teach. Rather than teaching them to, that's, we become the masters of this to make their world easier.
I move to approve the purchase of Forecast Five.
Second.
We'll take her off. He was just a little loud.
Dr. Isaacson.
Okay, any other discussion on this? So we're all dazzled by this, I'm sure. That's right. I think he'll be taking care of that. I have no doubt. He was excited about it. If there's no more discussion, we'll take a vote then, all in favor of purchasing the Forecast Five? All right. Next item has to do with a lovely topic, the drainage project in high school.
Well-
And did we get any bids? We're looking for-
Two bids were received. And Ray, did you hand out a second summary form? I think it was in forty-eight hour update, I think, Ray. Two bids were received, one was for fifteen thousand seven ninety, and the other one was for twenty-three thousand. In essence, the drain system has collapsed at the high school, inside the floor drain in cafeteria. It has backed up, Ray, two times?
At least two.
At least two. And we need to get that fixed, otherwise the health department will not be happy with us. Now, I will tell you, this, we did not have this budget. But this is one of those, it's come up, and we've got to get it fixed, there's no way around it. Ray, you want to talk about that just for a second? I don't want, I don't leave anything out.
Okay. District administration, this background, we've had some issues in the high school with this type of system, because of about the bid repair in the last twelve years. We've had to deal with this. It's mainly because a lot of the field that's underneath the concrete is moving, which causes the pipes to also move. And lucky on this one, we not broke any of them, it just actually shifted where it looks like a road coaster. So what's happened is you have too much water in certain parts of the bike, and none of the other parts of your pitch is not allowing the water to drain properly. So what they're going to be able to do- So what they're going to be able to do is open up the floor, and actually go beneath the pipe, and actually re-brain, bring it back up. We're looking at approximately about 70 feet of piping to do that with, with about seven branches, branches where they'll go out to a drain or a sink or something like that, that makes the flow come back. The two companies that are, have looked at this for us, are very well qualified to do this job, so I feel comfortable with either one of them actually in this case, but we do need to get this fixed, so the kitchen personnel can do their job properly, and not be worried about water, staining the water while they're trying to prepare food. As Dr. Foreman stated, we have the health department, our EBA being down, are looking at as one of the closest.
Now, Ray, I want to make sure, we talked about this will be done over Christmas, correct?
It will be done during Christmas.
And we have two bids, because basically that's the requirement.
It will be started as early as tomorrow, and in most cases, it's approved, approved this evening. It will take them approximately a couple of days to do so. The floor will not be 100% backed at par, Mrs. Jackson and I have talked about that, where we're gonna put mass over the top of the finish of the concrete, it'll be concreted, but there'll be a little gap, because the type of flooring has to go back on top of the concrete, it's a non-slip surface, and that has to come back on a little bit later on, and everything, but we will make sure our employees are safe and managed.
And we've used the Drain Express company before?
Yes, we have used, we have used that service many times throughout, throughout the school district, for different reasons.
I move to accept the Drain Express bid to the high school kitchen.
Any questions or discussion?
I'm just gonna plug into one of her little secret accounts here.
And it's about to tap out, right, we're about done with it.
A secret account?
She said just go, pull somebody out of the secret account, and I said we're about tapped out there, so...
You hit the nail on the head right now.
This, this and the lighting system in the, in the theater are, that's it.
We'll lean by the... Nothing else to do? Okay, oh, there you go. All right, if there's no more discussion, we'll take a vote, all in favor, raise your hand if you approve of the Drain Express. It says two, approving the purchase of Smart Boards. We need a motion to approve the bid from Kansas City Audio Visual for the purchase of 15 Smart Boards at the cost of $18,748.50. This will include 14 Smart Boards for the primary and one for the elementary.
Make the motion.
I said, thank you, Eric. I moved that. I moved, discussed this one before. Any other discussion, questions?
As far as management repair, if they're out in the city, we have issues with, with that, but isn't Schiller's a local?
Schiller's is more local, we've used both of them, both of those companies in the past, and that's never been an issue for us.
I see somebody down there. Any other questions? All in favor of approving the bid from Kansas City Audio Visual, raise your hand. Last item is approving the early graduation of Haley Short to graduate at semester. Thank you. Second by Rob. We received that information in an email. Any questions about that?
I just want to make one comment, Kathy, for future, like, this early graduate actually put the reason in her letter, and if you kind of make a note, if they missed the deadline, that was very helpful, because then I didn't have to call and ask.
This is the most extenuating of extenuating circumstances I have ever encountered, and it's very exciting and fabulous, but not uncommon, just uncommon for us, Karen. But she came to my office literally 20 minutes after that information was presented to her, so, that issue. But yeah, I will...
Just the fact that it was in there and...
Makes sense.
And it's a, it's a big deal?
It's a huge deal.
That's great. Okay. Any other discussion about that issue? Okay, all in favor of approving Haley Short's request to graduate early? Motion carried, so, who shares that decision?
They will contact her, right, she'll contact her counselor, and they're texting me now.
Okay.
I know she'll be excited, thank you for that.
Yes, that'll be great. So, yes, I need a motion to recess, open session. I'm looking at Renee. And we'll, Rob, you for a second, was that, was that you or Eric?
That was me. Yes, me, yes, Mrs. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to show a hand, to recess, please, all in favor, very good. Thank you for attending, and we wish you a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Enjoy your holidays.